Session at one forty, we're on the record, we're on the record, one forty. Mr. Russo, sir, how much more time do you think you need approximately? You tell me, one fifty-five, one fifty?
I understood at the beginning of the hearing that what was gonna happen was that, okay, I had two hours.
Okay.
And so, um, uh, the time was also equal for-
Right.
Judge Conley, two hours, and that questions that he would ask in cross-examination would be taken off of his time. But apparently it's been taken off of my time.
Yes, sir, that's why I'm trying to be fair here to everybody.
And that's why-
Um, let's just go thirty minutes at a time here, see how we can do, and Judge Conley, whatever. Mr. Russo, I have the right to cross-examine your folks at length, and we'll just go, but, uh, please expedite as much as you can-
Yes, sir.
So when you get out of here, it's two o'clock, and, uh, uh, but, uh, let's move on. I want to be fair to everybody in equal time, so. Mr. Russo, go right ahead.
Yes, the next witness we have is, uh, Chanel Gomez. She's been sworn in. Would you please state your name for the record? And what is your position? At, uh, what, uh, what school?
Metzger Middle School.
And what are your duties as assistant principal?
Ensure campus safety, monitor instruction.
Now, how long have you been assistant principal at Metzger?
This is the end of my third year.
Uh, do you know Carolyn Ross?
Yes.
Do you know Lauren Hopkins?
Yes.
What are you trained about, the sharing of district computer logins and passwords?
Technology trains us to not share passwords and to not log on and allow others to use your access.
Did Ms. Ross ever share her computer passwords with you?
Yes.
Why did she do that?
She would, um, want us to pull resumes, um, peruse applicants for vacancies that we had on campus through Talent Ed.
Did any other pa- staff member access Talent Ed with Ms. Ross's password?
Yes.
Of who?
Uh, Jerome Johnson, Josie Juarez.
Did you ever, uh, hear Ms. Ross herself provide her password to any of the other assistant principals?
Yes.
You, uh, you mentioned in your written statement, which has been marked and admitted into evidence as exhibit number twenty-two, uh, the term Ms. Ross, Ms. Ross's petty cash fund. Did you ever hear Ms. Ross use that term?
No.
What term did she use?
Uh, I heard her use "my pot."
Do you know the source of the money that went into Ms. Ross's pot?
I'm aware that, um, teachers were charged a dollar to wear jeans on Thursdays. Students were charged for activities.
What activities were the students charged for?
Pep rallies, choir concerts, theater productions, um, special events, BMX bike shows.
And, uh, do you know how much the students would be charged for those activities?
Various amounts, a dollar, two dollars.
And that money went into the pot?
Yes.
Uh, did you, how many students, approximately, how many students attend Metzger?
We have approximately three fifty.
Did you ever hear Ms. Ross, um, uh, say to charge for any of the activities you were talking about?
I'm sorry?
Did you ever hear Ms. Ross herself indicate that students should be charged for those activities-
Yes.
That you told us about? I'm sorry?
Sure.
I'll, I'll, I'll back up, yes, sir, yes, sir. Did you ever hear Ms. Ross say to charge for any of those activities that you talked to us about?
Yes.
Do you believe it was appropriate to charge students to go to those events or those activities?
No.
Why not?
I just felt as if these activities were being offered for the students during the school day. It should have benefited their benefit for them to enjoy.
Did you ever say that to Ms. Ross?
Yes.
What was her response?
That, uh, this was her campus and we would follow her lead.
Did you ever have, uh, come to have a concern about some filming that was taking place on campus during the school day?
Yes.
What can you tell us about that?
At the, toward the end of the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen school year, there was a camera crew on campus. Uh, myself and the other administrators observed the camera crew in the hallways of the school during passing period.
What were you concerned about?
Uh, student safety and privacy.
And this was during the school day?
Yes.
During a time when students were going to class and walking in between classes?
Yes.
Did you ever, uh, did Ms. Ross ever talk to you and the other Metzger staff about the filming?
Yes.
What did she say?
Later that day, she explained that she was working on a documentary.
What was the documentary about?
I recall her explaining something about how, um, things were done at the school, different things that were implemented at the school.
And, uh, it was, it was to highlight her accomplishments at the campus?
Yes.
Did Ms. Ross ever ask any district employee to run personal errands for her?
Yes.
What can you tell us about that?
I'm, I'm just aware that Ms. Hopkins would sometimes leave campus to do anything that Ms. Ross asked of her.
In your, uh, written statement, you mentioned a bridging over ceremony? What is, what is a bridging over ceremony?
The bridging over ceremony celebrates the eighth graders that are going on to high school.
Did you participate in the twenty fifteen bridging over ceremony?
Yes.
What was your role in that ceremony?
I helped facilitate, welcome the parents and facilitate the agenda for that evening.
Were you on the stage for that event?
Yes.
Describe what you observed of Ms. Ross's conduct during the twenty fifteen bridging over ceremony.
During one of the periods of transition, uh, Ms. Ross entered the left side of the stage with an additional mic and began to address the parents, um, about being there that night, but not having attended other things, um, during the school year.
How would you describe her speech?
Um, uh, aggressive, loud, she was kind of rambling.
Uh, was her speech slurred in any way?
Yes.
Did, um, uh, how, was she taken off the stage?
Yes, Officer Day came onto the stage and tried to graciously help her walk off.
Could you describe, uh, what that looked like to you?
He walked also from the left side of the stage and kind of just put his arm around her and tried to help her walk off the stage. As they were turning to walk off, she, um, hit a glass decoration that was toward the end of the stage and it broke.
Did she continue to try to hold on to the mic when this was happening?
Yes.
Were you aware of a Bible study program being conducted at Metzger?
Yes.
What can you tell us about that program?
It occurred, um, during the breakfast time. Uh, we would be asked, whoever was working in the cafeteria, um, in the morning that had the mic would be asked to announce that students could now attend Bible study if they chose to, in the gym.
Uh, do you, uh, did, what, did an adult from outside the district lead that program?
Yes.
Do you know who it was?
Mr. Coker.
Uh, if you'll take a look at what has been, uh, marked and admitted as exhibit thirty, it's in that notebook. Can you tell us what that is, please?
An email that I sent to the Metzger teachers. Just, um, authorizing, Ms. Ross authorized a pep rally.
Did, uh, Ms. Ross permit tickets to be sold to that event?
Yes.
Pass the witness.
Ms. Gomez, uh, when the, uh, district put Ms. Ross on administrative leave, who did they appoint at, do as the interim principal?
Uh, Mr. Nato James.
Had you proffered your name as a possible replacement for that?
No, sir.
Were you surprised that you were not considered instead of Mr. James?
No, sir.
Would you have accepted it if they had have made it available to you?
Certainly.
You said her pot, are you sure she said her pot?
Yes.
You sure she didn't say her pad?
Her, excuse me?
Her pad?
Pad? No.
You did, you do understand that she had a principal's administrative, uh, activity, what is it? Fund. She had a principal's activity fund?
I, um, I didn't keep the books, I wasn't aware of that.
And, uh, where did they keep this pot that you claim?
I'm not aware, I don't know.
Did you ever see the pot?
No, sir.
So, your understanding of the existence of the pot is Ms. Ross saying "my pot"?
Yes.
And you didn't know whether she meant a physical pot and money in it, or, or a little hidden stash? To you, that meant a hidden stash or something, is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, I'd ever seen that quote, "hidden stash."
Correct.
Right, so when you claimed that she had a pot, that is based upon never seeing it? You don't know how much went in it? And you don't know how it was expended?
That's correct.
Uh, in your statement, you said Ms. Ross did charge faculty and staff a dollar to wear jeans on Thursdays. Based upon your experience in the school district, did any other school do the same thing?
Not in the other school that I've worked at.
That's not what I'm asking. I said, based upon your experience and, and, and the understanding of talking to other principals, other ti- teachers, did, was that a practice that went on at least one other school, at least two other schools?
Not that I'm aware of.
Were you aware that Wagner had that same policy?
Excuse me, I'm gonna object, it's asked and answered, she already said she doesn't know, and he's just using up more time with the board.
I'm using up time for Ms. Ross. Now, I, I, I really respect the board, but I'm not here to worry about the board's time. I'm worried about Ms. Ross's time. And Ms. Ross needs to know how somebody can make these kind of statements. And we're gonna spend, I hope that I can spend as much time as necessary to elicit that.
But, sir, once she answers a question, you don't need to go back and ask it again, but-
Well, I thought we weren't using the rules of evidence.
Well, that's, that's the board's rule, so you can ask any question you want, sir, but don't ask it three or four times.
When you worked at Wagner, they didn't have a jean day?
Not that we charged teachers for.
They did have a jean day?
Yes.
Would you be surprised to find out that my stepson works at Wagner?
No.
Do you know Quentin Iger-Hart Summers?
Uh, you know, all right, I'm gonna object, he's, he's actually trying to testify. Uh, he's not on the witness list, and he's bringing up items that clearly are, are beyond the knowledge of this witness.
I thought that we were here for, for, let the board decide the weight of the evidence.
Sustained, sir, we need to move on.
Would it, uh, would you be surprised that a teacher at a, at Wagner said that they paid five dollars for jean day?
Same objection, it, it, he's bringing up nothing that's in there before the record. He's, he's, he's already answered that question more than once, and he's still asking the same question in a different format.
I've never heard objection, nothing before the record. We're not here before the record, we're here to make a rest. And the record is, did you, have you ever talked to any teacher at Wagner that said they'd had a jean day? And that they paid to do it?
None.
Were you aware that a jean day policy has been issued?
No.
Do you get the Monday memo?
Yes. Oh, you mean the memo that there is no longer to be charges for dollars, I mean, for jeans?
Yes.
Yes, I did see that.
And with, and reading that, what was your understanding, that there was a jean day that could no longer be done? Or there's never been a jean day, so, I mean, what, what was your understanding of that statement on the Monday memo?
If it was a practice on your campus to charge teachers to wear jeans, that you were to discontinue that practice.
And when you said Ms. Ross charged students, uh, there had been, uh, an exhibit presented here that says a coach was setting up a, he was asking for authorization to set up a pep rally with basketball and soccer. Was he the sponsor then of that pep rally?
I, I'm not sure.
So you don't know if the coach who sends out a memo saying, "I'm gonna have a pep rally," is the sponsor of the pep rally?
If any pep rallies or activities happened on the campus, they didn't happen without Ms. Ross's approval.
Okay, that's right, and he got approval, that, would it be assumed that if he's having it, he got approval from Ms. Ross?
I would assume so.
Okay, so Ms. Ross isn't standing there individually collecting the money at the door?
Correct.
And the proceeds were deposited into Ms. Ross's petty cash fund. This is the pot that you've never seen.
Correct.
You don't know where it's kept. You don't know what money's in it. You don't know how the money's been spent. But you're here saying that the pos- proceeds were deposited into Ms. Ross's petty cash fund. Did you ever see Ms. Ross's money pot deposited in anything?
Can you repeat that, please?
The proceeds were deposited into Ms. Ross's petty cash fund. When did you see her funds being deposited into a petty cash fund?
I never saw the money go into the fund that was in discussion.
And, so, we're here, we're getting hearsay from you, this was somebody else told you, it's not something that you know?
No, sir, that would be what she would say herself.
Again, this was somebody else told you, right?
Objection.
Is that what you interpret, interpreted?
She's asked and answered, it said that Ms. Ross was the one that said-
Sustained, we need to move on, sir.
Did Ms. Ross tell you that she had a principal's administrative fund?
No, sir.
Did you know that she had a principal's administrative fund?
No, sir.
So, do you know if any pro- you didn't see where the proceeds were deposited into the principal's administrative fund either, did you?
No.
And you said Ms. Ross charged students for activities, you're saying that she approved charging students for activities, is that correct?
She would both approve and at times, um, direct that students would be charged.
Okay, now, how does she direct the students to be charged?
If there was an event, she would ask that tickets be sold for whatever amount.
Okay, and, but wouldn't the event already have a sponsor?
Not, not all the time. When you say sponsor, you mean someone that was organizing the event?
Yes.
Not all the time. Sometimes the-
How can you have an event unless somebody's organized?
Well, sometimes the events would, would be organized by Ms. Ross.
Okay, and what events were organized by Ms. Ross that she charged people to attend?
Um, if I recall, uh, uh, there was a BMX bike show that Ms. Ross organized, that they visited the campus and tickets were sold for students to attend.
When you say Ms. Ross organized them, did you see her meeting with them to setting up the, the visit?
No, but that's what she communicated with us, because the administrator's staff was unaware of the event.
So, then we rely, whatever Ms. Ross told you, then you accepted it as whatever she told you?
If she said that she had invited the people to come, then yes, sir.
Okay, and if she told you that, uh, you were to, uh, assist her with keeping up with the forms, you, you would have done that, didn't you, wouldn't?
What, what forms are you referring?
I'm talking about- Ed Euphoria? Ed Euphoria?
Ed Euphoria?
Yeah. Were you, were you involved in that?
Keeping up with Ed Euphoria?
Yes.
What do you mean?
Approving.
Approving what?
Anything in Ed Euphoria.
There were some things, like if teachers requested to leave early, those things came to us in Ed Euphoria, yes?
Would it be fair to say that you were the second person in charge?
Yes.
Uh, who is Ms. Dixon?
Ms. Dixon is the assistant principal secretary.
Okay, uh, you're like a group of, you have one person?
Yes.
All right, and who did she report to?
She ultimately would report to Ms. Ross, but she would assist the assistant principals.
Okay, and were you aware that she wa- that she was, uh, involved in, in IDs? And cos- and, uh, composition books?
Yes, she issued IDs and sometimes would issue extra composition books, yes.
Okay, all right. Did, uh, were you involved in that in any way?
No, she usually organized that.
Who's she?
Ms. Dixon organized that.
Okay, and how long has Ms. Dixon been there?
Longer than, than me, I'm not sure.
Did you ever see her, uh, deposit any money into Ms. Ross's petty cash fund?
No, I know that she would make deposits, I don't know where the deposits went.
She was your secretary, but you don't know where the deposits were. Well, would she go to, see Lauren?
Yes.
With that, too?
Yes.
Lauren is like slash secretary bookkeeper?
Yes.
We're talking about the two fifteen bridging over ceremony. Was that, uh, were there temporary lights erected on the stage for that?
Temporary-
Were candles placed on the, uh, lighted candles?
They were battery operated, um, tea lights inside of glass jars, yes.
And, uh, did anyone trip over them?
Yes.
Beside Ms. Ross?
Not that I'm aware of.
Was Ms. Lisa Butler in, in attendance?
I'm not aware, I'm not sure.
Uh, I'm trying to be correct here. You, you've not had any special training in terms of identifying people who are inebriated or claim to be, uh, that you suspect are inebriated?
No.
And that, that's just your, your impression?
Correct.
From the fact, and that was contributed to, uh, uh, the fact that she tripped? Or what, what, what gave you that impression? That she kept going on and on, talking?
Just her behavior.
Yeah, okay, all right. So, a part of that behavior is she kept talking, is that?
Yes.
All right, and she was, uh, lecturing the parents about how they ought to attend more than just the bridging over?
Correct.
And she broke a glass decoration, which was the little tea glass situation? How did she break, one, two, three?
I believe it was just one.
And, uh, she had to be gently escorted and had to gently escort her off the stage. Are you claiming this was Officer Day?
Yes.
Right, and why would Officer Day be the one to escort her off the stage?
I guess he felt the need to intercede at that time.
Were you on the stage?
Yes.
Was anybody else on the stage beside her?
I believe, um, that the counselor was standing off to the left side as well.
Okay, and again, I ask, I, I hope, you've answered this, but you don't remember seeing Lisa Butler there?
No, I don't.
Were the past members of the PTO for the fourteen, fifteen year there?
I, I would assume there's, I know one of them had a, or two of them had students that were bridging over, so I would assume, I didn't see them, but-
And we say bridging over, they go, they moved on to high school?
Correct.
And so, the PTO members were the ones that would have been there for beginning in two thousand fourteen and ending in two thousand fifteen, is that correct?
Correct.
Was, uh, was it an ongoing joke that Ms. Ross always spoke too long at these, uh, events?
I don't know about at bridging over, but sometimes at meetings with faculty, yes.
Okay, she's somewhat verbose, would it be fair to say?
Yes.
Okay, then you see, you mentioned here, during the fall of fifteen sixteen, the campus hosted a fall festival. The PTO sold wristbands for student entry. The PTO president also assisted in the sale of tickets. I'm unsure how and where the funds were deposited from the event, but I'm aware that the PTO president questioned the amount of money or lack of money returned to the PTO for their sales. Who was the PTO president you, you're talking about?
Ms. Butler.
And you say the funds were deposited from, you don't know how, she aware the funds were deposited from this event? Who, based upon your experience there, who would have been, had been the recipient of the funds?
The deposits?
Yes.
Ms. Hopkins.
Did you actually see deposits being made or, or money being taken to her?
No, the sponsors turned in tickets, which in turn, the money was supposed to be deposited into their activity accounts.
But I'm saying, what did you actually see?
I, I saw a, a couple of the sponsors deposit tickets.
Okay, and then they got a fifty cents or a dollar per ticket, how, how much did you get, do you remember?
I, I don't recall.
All right, and, uh, and it, was Ms. Ross, was Ms. Ross involved with the deposits at all?
Not that I'm aware.
Okay, and was Ms. Hopkins there?
She would have been the one receiving the tickets and the deposits.
Ms. Ross sometimes didn't drive to school and would often ask the staff to drive her to destinations, district office meeting, and/or personal errands during the day. What personal errands do you, are you aware of that somebody did on her behalf?
That someone did or took her on?
No, no, they did, uh, yeah, they went, they went to-
Correct, I know Ms. Hopkins would come and say she was leaving campus to run an errand for Ms. Ross. That's the only person that I'm aware of.
So, your knowledge of that is from Ms. Hopkins?
Correct.
Was it during the day or on her break or lunchtime, or do, do you know?
It could have been a combination, I'm, I'm not sure.
Did, is district office meetings part of the responsibilities of a principal?
Absolutely.
Okay, then Ms. Hopkins and administrative staff had access to Ms. Ross's passwords that she openly shared. How many passwords did she have?
I'm, I'm not sure.
But you, your statement here says, "Ms. Hopkins and administrative staff had access to Ms. Ross's passwords that she openly shared."
Correct.
Do you know, do you know for a fact that she had more than one password?
Yes.
And do you know what that password it was?
I only knew of the password for Talent Ed, I didn't access anything else.
Do you didn't access anything else because you didn't have the other password?
Correct.
And do you know anybody who did have the, who had more than one password?
More than one of Ms. Ross's passwords?
Yes.
Ms. Hopkins?
And did you ever advise anybody that Ms. Hopkins had passwords?
No.
Did you ever call anybody in administration and say, "Hey, I'm concerned about this"?
No.
Uh, did you call anybody in IT?
Nope.
Did you call somebody in applications?
No.
And why didn't you?
I didn't feel that, I, I had any, that wasn't anything that I needed to report.
Did you see anything that you felt was improper, occurring as a result of somebody having a password?
Not that I'm aware.
Were you ever made aware of any money missing or anything like that?
No.
Were you ever, uh, made aware of some, uh, an approval of something that was, that shouldn't have been approved?
No, not until the start of this investigation.
Okay, and what was approved that shouldn't have been approved, or, let me rephrase that. Was it a problem that the person approving it was the wrong person to be approving it? Or the activity itself should not have ever been approved?
Neither.
I'm not sure, I understand the last thing about coaches that, uh, after Ms. Ross had been placed on administrative leave would pay, and somebody else had been appointed as interim, who was the first person appointed as interim principal?
Mr. Nato James.
Okay. And how long was he there before they replaced him?
Maybe three weeks or so.
Okay, so by April fifth, they got a new person at this point, right?
I'm not sure when.
Okay, well, three weeks from February twenty fifth is the twenty first of March, now we're now we're on April fifth. On April fifth, during a discussion with Mr. Gonzalez and Ms. Bera, I shared that Ms. Ross had allowed a special education co-teachers. That they had come down to talk to you about, uh, I'm sorry, let me take that back. What was the circumstances that you had the April fifth meeting?
The April fifth meeting, um, I believe that was Ms. Bera and Mr. Gonzalez were on the campus.
Okay. And how did they come to, did they come to you to say that we're here to investigate?
Yes.
Okay. And what did they say they were there to investigate?
These, I guess, various allegations with Ms. Ross, I guess.
Okay. Were, were one of those allegations that co-teachers leave their co-teach class to coach during athletics?
Yes.
They'd ask you about that?
No.
You offered that, that they, they didn't know that when they?
It was discussed in the meeting with them, yes.
Okay. But I'm saying, you offered it. They didn't know anything about it until you told them.
Correct.
Coverage using a paraprofessional was initially arranged for one class. That paraprofessional eventually discontinued attending the class. Coverage for the second special education was never arranged, from my knowledge. This has since been rectified by, by Mr. James. So, it was done in the first three weeks after she?
As far as correcting the problem?
Yes.
Yes.
And were, were these doing, uh, certain seasons or was this year round?
I believe it started with basketball season, but I think it overflowed into track from...
And who are the special education co-teachers you're talking about?
Mr. Andrew Green and Mr. Johnny Moore.
And that's the same Mr. Johnny Moore? There's numbers hanging up at, at Spurs headquarters?
I believe so. I haven't seen it, but I would imagine.
And he was taking time to coach basketball?
Yes, yes.
And they said that, that they used a paraprofessional initially to arrange for one class. That paraprofessional eventually discontinued attending the class. Over what period of time were we talking about?
Months. I believe the teachers were initially allowed to leave their co-teach classes sometime in January.
They do get one period off, don't they?
Some teachers do.
And if they, if doing their one period off, they went to coach?
These, these two teachers were assigned to a class during that particular period.
And was it your job to assign them to class?
No.
Was your, your job to monitor whether they were in the class or not?
Where, our job is to monitor all the teachers, supervise all teachers.
And did you discuss this with Ms. Ross?
When the arrangement was initially made, it was discussed in a leadership meeting, yes.
And what was the outcome of that discussion?
That they would continue to go to athletics and coverage would be sent to their classes.
So, she in effect came up with a plan, basically. Is that correct?
Correct.
Was the concept to use instructional support for the classes that he, that they were out of? Who, who was the paraprofessional that filled in?
The only one that I'm aware of was Ashley.
With who?
The only paraprofessional that I'm aware of that was assigned that was Ashley.
Okay. Uh, how about Mr. Shad?
I wasn't aware that he was assigned that.
Isn't Mr. Shad a, a special ed paraprofessional?
Yes.
And was he the paraprofessional that eventually discontinued going to the class?
Not that I'm aware of.
Is there more than one paraprofessional?
Yes, we have several.
Would you consider the PTO fall festival a success?
Yes.
And did the sponsor, the PTO, take the money to the, to Lauren?
I have no idea.
Were, did Ms. Ross, to your knowledge, actually organize any pep rallies?
I don't, I can't recall.
Were pep rallies normally sponsored by the teams or the coach?
I'm not sure. I believe, I believe some might have also been sponsored by PTO.
How about plays? Isn't that theater arts or music and arts?
Correct.
And then it said other programs. I don't know what that means and et cetera. The proceeds were deposited to Ms. Ross's petty cash fund. Again, a petty cash that you've never seen. You've never made a deposit in. You've never seen anybody make a deposit in. You just know it exists because you understand her, that she said, "My pot." Is that correct?
Correct.
Excuse me, she didn't say she understood it. She said, "Ms. Ross said it."
Do you know whether or not, uh, people that came on the campus had been employed previously by the school district? That, well, she had volunteers come, but some of them had been previous employees of the school district?
I, I have no idea.
If they had been a previous employee of the school district, uh, is, is, are you aware of the, of the protocol for, uh, doing background checks, et cetera?
I wasn't a part of that.
And who's the person responsible for making sure background checks are done on the campus?
A back, I, the only person I know, Ms. Saffold does a volunteer training.
And, uh, if the school district requires a copy of your driver's license uh, to be given to them so they can get a criminal history check of you, who would they go to at your school to, to, uh, start that process?
I, I wasn't aware that that happened on the campus. I thought that that happened at HR.
Okay, can I interrupt for a minute here? I, folks, I gave great leeway here. Each side was supposed to get two hours. Now, I apologize that I didn't time each of you individually for cross and recross. That's my fault. But we're now in two and a half hours into this, okay? And I think I've been very liberal with examination and cross-examination, but we really need to move on here, okay? Um, I've really tried to take care of everybody here, but if this was, would already be into Judge Conley's time if we were going there. So, let's move on, please. Thank you. Judge?
And may I make a comment?
Yes, sir, you can.
We're here because a woman has been non-renewed and denied her rightful position as a principal of a school. And I mean, it's the nicest way I can say it. My purpose is to make sure that we examine every reason why this lady is in this position. And I, I, I'm sorry for your, if you have something else to do, I'm, I'm sorry.
Well, sir, I don't have anything else to do. I'm here to be the presiding officer, and I've gave everyone great leeway in this proceeding so far. Now, I should have had two time clocks, one for you and one for Mr. Russo and went, but I didn't. So therefore, I'm giving great leeway, but we need to move on. You have five more minutes on this witness, Judge Conley.
Okay. Ms. Gomez, have you been, uh, have you been, uh, at, at school this semester? Were you at school, uh, during this past semester?
Yes.
Okay. Were you away from, from the school at any time over the last year?
The last school year?
Yes.
Yes, I was on FMLA. I was on FMLA, yes.
For how long?
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm sorry. I, I don't have any idea what relevance, the fact that this woman was on FMLA leave has to do with these proceedings or the errors that I've asked questions about.
Right, Judge Conley, we need to stick...
If he doesn't sit, I can, I can take you right there.
Your time is running. You have about three more minutes, sir.
Yeah, I can take you right there.
Three more minutes, sir.
During the time that you were off campus, did you get any information that Ms. Ross's petty cash fund was being filled, being deposited? Anybody come to you and tell you that I put some money in Ms., in Ms. Ross's petty cash fund?
No.
And when you came back, did you actually see or anybody, did she tell, other than what her comment to you, did you have any other information that any money was deposited in her petty cash fund?
Can you clarify that question?
Did Lauren, did Lauren Hopkins, was she a source of any information for you?
At what point in time? At all?
I mean, after, after Ms., uh, did you, did you talk to Ms. Lauren after she was placed on administrative leave?
No, no.
Alright, and finally, uh, the PTO fall festival, the PTA president, uh, was the sponsor and was involved in, in selling tickets, selling wristbands and collecting the money and dealing with the vendors. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Russo, sir.
I have no further questions of this witness. May she be excused?
Anyone else? Okay. Nope. Thank you, ma'am. You're dismissed.
James Nato is the next witness.
Okay, we're back on the clock. Witness was sworn. Ready, sir? Ready? He's been sworn.
He has been sworn, yes, sir.
Mr. Russo, go ahead, sir.
Sir, would you please state your name for the record?
Uh, Nato James.
And what is your position?
Assistant principal.
Do you know Carolyn Ross?
Yes, ma'am. I'm with her, sir.
Do you know Judson ISD Police Officer Larry Day?
Yes.
In connection with student discipline duties, uh, have you ever transported students to their homes?
Uh, yes.
Did you ever use a vehicle owned by Ms. Ross to transport a student?
Yes.
When was that approximately?
Uh, it was, uh, last year at the end of a school year, uh, 2015, around May.
Was it during school day?
Uh, yes.
Was Ms. Ross's vehicle parked on school property?
Uh, yes.
Did anyone else go with you?
Um, Officer Day and another student.
Describe what you saw when you entered Ms. Ross's vehicle.
Uh, we were proceeding to put the student, um, in the back seat of a car. Um, there was some luggage, some bags, um, in the back. And we were, um, we had to put the seats down, and so we moved the bags over to put, um, the seat down. And then just one of the bags, it looked like it was a, a bottle of alcohol.
Bottle of alcohol?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, how did you know it was alcohol?
Um, just from the, the labeling.
Did Officer Day see it as well?
Uh, yes, at the time.
On your way back from, uh, taking the student home, did you do anything to Ms. Ross's vehicle?
Um, yes, we ran the, the truck through a car wash.
Did Ms. Ross ask you to do that before you left the campus?
She didn't give us a directive or ask us to do it. Um, she had mentioned it earlier that day, and so we just, just did it.
Do you know a gentleman by the name of John Coker?
Yes.
Uh, how do you know him?
Um, he went on Fridays. Um, the students had like a inspirational Fridays to where he would just meet with the, the kids in the morning.
Uh, would he be permitted to make announcements over the PA system about that inspirational?
Um, he did make some announcements. Either I made them or he would make them. Just to, for the, to let him know that it was time for that meeting.
I'll pass the witness.
Was, uh, did you, what did you do with the liquor?
I'm sorry?
What did you do with the liquor?
I didn't do anything with it. It just was in the bag.
And it was underneath hidden or?
Yeah, it was underneath, uh, inside the bag. It wasn't, it wasn't open. No, no, no. It wasn't. It just saw when we moved the bag and we put the bag, moved the bag over. You just saw a glimpse of it, that's all.
And, uh, when, when Ms. Ross allowed you to use her vehicle, that was further, further into making sure the student got home?
Yes.
She didn't tell you to, you needed to do anything with alcohol or anything else?
No.
Was that a part of the equation?
No.
And, uh, that was her vehicle with the... Would it be fair to say that it was not in open, clear view?
No, it, it wasn't.
And that you had to make some little effort to find it, right?
Um, not to find it, just whenever, uh, the bag was open and whenever I placed it, moved it over to the other side of the truck, you could just, you could just see it.
Did the student see it?
No.
And what did you do when you got back to the camp?
Uh, went back to work.
Did you tell her what you, what you had found?
No.
I'm sorry, did you tell who?
Did you tell her what you had found?
No.
Did you report it to anybody?
No.
And why not?
Um, I mean, it was her vehicle. It wasn't any of my business to report it. Um, she does a lot of traveling because she lives a far distance, so she has her bags with her. I mean, that, that was her personal item.
Are there anybody else's bags in there?
Um...
Or did you know?
Oh, no, I don't.
Have you ever seen anybody else drive her vehicle?
Yes.
Who was that?
Um, Mr. Claire.
Tony Claire?
Yes.
And do you know whether or not Tony Claire drove the vehicle that day?
Uh, he drove it often because he would, um, drop her off at work.
Thank you.
Mr. Russo?
I have no further questions.
I have one question for the board. Could you tell if the seals were open or broken on the bottles?
From, from what it looked like, it looked like it was full, that it was not broken, but you couldn't really see. I just saw the amount that was in there, let's say it was, it was filled to the top. I couldn't see if it was broken or not.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, folks? No? You're dismissed. Next witness, Mr. Russo.
Uh, Chief Ramon. Chief Ramon.
Witness sworn, Mr. Russo?
Yes, she has been. Would you please state your name for the record?
Teresa Ann Ramon.
And what position do you hold at Judson Independent School District?
Chief of Police for Judson ISD.
How long?
Uh, thirteen and a half years.
Do your duties include participating in investigations?
Yes, sir.
Do you know Carolyn Ross?
Yes, sir.
Do you know Lauren Hopkins?
Yes, sir.
As a part of your investigative practices or witnesses, you interview given an opportunity to prepare and submit a written statement?
Yes, sir.
Do you, do you use those written statements in connection with making determination about an investigation?
Yes, sir.
Did you participate in investigation of Lauren Hopkins and Carolyn Ross?
Yes, sir.
Why was an investigation started?
We were asked by the financial director and HR director to compare checks that did not have signatures that were alike.
Were you present on February 24th, 2016, when Ms. Hopkins was interviewed as a part of the investigation?
Yes, sir.
Who else was present?
Ms. Barra.
Was Ms. Hopkins given an opportunity to submit a written statement after she was interviewed?
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm gonna hand you what's been marked, if you give one, exhibit, exhibit 23. This has not been admitted, uh, made a part of the notebooks yet, so I'm asking Mr. Baker to give her, show her a copy. Can you please tell us what exhibit number 23 is?
It's a written statement by Ms. Hopkins.
Does what Ms. Hopkins write in exhibit 23 match what she said during the interview with Ms. Barra and you?
Yes, sir.
Did either you or Ms. Barra tell Ms. Hopkins what to write?
No, we did not tell her what to write.
At this time, I would offer exhibit 23 into the record. You please go ahead and pass out.
Objection. It's pure hearsay. Uh, Ms., may I thank the witness for, for the purpose of individual voir dire? Well, as part of my objection, I wanted to voir dire on the ability to recognize and authenticate the documents. Voir dire of a witness is.
Would you go ahead and provide a copy?
Again, I'll, I'll, let me continue my objections, it's hearsay, right.
Claire, and did you say some, admitted?
And those are being given to the board members to place into the notebooks, and there should be a tab for number 23. Mr. Baker, would you show a copy of exhibit number 24 to Chief Ramon, please?
Number 24?
Yes, sir. Actually, Chief Ramon, if you look at number 24, it has already been admitted into evidence. Could you, for the record, just tell us what exhibit number 24 is?
Exhibit 24 is the case number that was established by Judson ISD Police Department on February 23rd, 2016.
Did you yourself prepare the last page of exhibit 24?
I did, sir.
Were those case reports made at or near the time reflected in the records?
Yes, sir.
Were those case reports made by someone with knowledge of what was recorded in them?
Yes, sir.
Are those case reports kept in the regular course of the district's business?
Yes, sir.
Are those case reports made as a part of the regular investigative activities of the district?
Yes, sir.
Are you one of the custodians of the case reports reflected in exhibit 24?
Yes, sir.
Pass the witness.
How you doing, uh, Chief? There, according to your statement, there was a video done of her first statement, of her first investigative experience.
Yes, sir.
Was that ever reduced to a transcript?
Uh, I cannot recall it this time, sir.
Okay, well, could you recall if you read it? It's in the paragraph here. During the interview, Chief Roman, Roman.
Ramon.
Ramon questioned Ms. Hopkins why she made contact with Ms. Ross on February 23rd after Lieutenant O'Callahan hit you directly from the police department and the HR department on video.
Can you please slow down?
Okay, I recall now the video that Lieutenant O'Callahan recorded.
Yes.
Okay.
And what, what, did she make a statement on, on video at that, at that investigation?
She made a statement on video.
Okay, and was that statement she made on video different than the one she made to you?
Yes.
And the one that she made on video, did she declare that she, that Ms. Ross signed all the checks and that uh, she did not use Ms. Ross's signature?
That was not on video, sir, it was only written on a statement, on the second interview.
One more time. I'm asking you, during the first interview, did she say that she is the one that was, was signing Ms. Ross's name?
No, on the first interview, no.
And so, on the first interview, she, she told you that. So based upon your experience, on the second interview, what did she do?
She admitted that Ms. Ross had given her permission to sign the checks.
She admitted that Ms. Ross had given her permission to sign the check?
Correct.
Because if Ms. Ross had not given her permission to sign the checks, she would have been charged with forgery.
That I don't know of, sir. If she did not receive permission, she would have been charged with forgery.
So the person that you were interviewing, who admits that she forged somebody's name, told you that she was given permission, and you accepted that?
We accepted on a written statement.
I mean, you, you based your beliefs in the case based on the fact that Ms. Lauren told you that because she was, because she had actually forged the signatures, but it was all right because she'd been given permission by Ms. Ross? Did she tell you why?
She says because she was loyal to her principal and that her principal authorized her to sign checks.
And that way, she was not gonna be charged?
Well, we didn't know at the time until we talked to the district attorney's office.
Okay, but if she had not told you that Ms. Ross gave her permission, she would have been charged with criminal activity, is that correct?
Depending on the evidence that we provided to the district attorney's office.
And after you provided the district attorney's, the office the fact that she's saying that she was given permission, did you have any independent information that she was given permission?
We have not completed the investigation yet, sir.
Okay, and why are we here?
Because this is an open hearing for a contract renewer, not a renewal.
And you're saying that the fact that Ms. Hopkins told you that somebody gave her permission to keep from going to jail, that that is the basis upon your investigation of Ms. Ross?
We didn't tell her she was going to jail, we told her that it was an open investigation.
Okay, but you, you think she might know that if she didn't say that she had permission, that she would be charged with criminal activity?
I cannot speak for her.
Excuse me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna object. He's, he's asking this witness to speculate. She's already answered the questions involving what was asked and what information was provided.
Did you get any, in your open investigation, have you got any independent information that verifies that Ms. Ross gave her permission to sign her name?
We're still investigating the case, sir.
Yes or no?
At this time, I can only tell you that we're still investigating the case due with Ms. Hopkins.
I'm asking a question, and I'm asking for a yes or no answer. Do you have any independent information, not evidence, any independent information that she was given permission by Ms. Ross to forge her name?
No.
And how long is this, oh, this investigation started on February 23rd?
Yes, sir.
That was the first interview where she said, "No, uh, no, I didn't sign, I didn't sign it, I didn't sign it." Then the next day, when you and Ms. Barra, where did you have her? We started, we met at, you went to her, to her job. Did you have her on the uniform?
At whose job?
Ms. Hopkins.
No, we did not go to her job, sir.
Okay, at approximately 9:21 a.m. on February 24th, Wednesday, Ms. Barra and I met with Lauren Hopkins, secretary at Metzger Middle School. Ms. Hopkins started a conversation with her history and experience in Judson ISD. Was this in your place?
No, sir, it was here at district office.
Okay, and did you have your uniform on?
I can't recall that day, sir, in the morning, if I had a uniform or not, or a suit.
Are there times that you don't wear your uniform?
There's times that I don't wear my uniform. I wear a suit, a business suit.
Was there any reason you wore a uniform today?
Um, it's because that's what I wore today.
So when she told you she's her boss and I notify her about everything, you accepted that as being truthful?
Sure.
And the day before, when she came in and said, "I didn't sign it," did you, did, did anybody accept that as truthful?
I wasn't present for that interview, sir. The first interview that took place by Lieutenant O'Callahan, I was not present.
I'm gonna ask you again. It's a yes or no answer. On the day before, when she came in and said, "I, I didn't sign it and I didn't, I didn't forge, I didn't forge any signatures," did Lieutenant O'Callahan take that as correct?
Due to her demeanor, we knew that she had signed the checks.
So you knew she was lying?
Yes, sir.
So she lied from the very beginning? So the next day, she reformed, and everything she told you from that point on was totally true?
It's her opinion, it's what she wrote on a statement.
It's her opinion, the opinion that's keeping her from being charged criminally. Is that correct?
It depends, we're not close with the investigation, sir.
Do you realize that she discussed the criminal penalties and, and that the people here said that they, they have no interest in pursuing a criminal penalty? And that the only person that can pursue a criminal penalty is Ms. Ross?
We, at the time during the investigation, again, it's an open investigation and we're trying to see what we're going to do, but because Ms. Hopkins stated that Ms. Ross provided her permission, and we're talking about from signatures on checks from the school district, including accounts, we were holding both of them responsibility, responsible.
And if she hadn't told you that Ms. Ross gave her permission, what, what would you have done?
We would still probably have an open investigation, sir.
Did you, uh, did you go to the bank?
The school district had requested the bank documents, which we all received a copy of, and we compared uh, checks with our copies that were provided to us.
And did you go to any of the people the checks were made payable to, to see what occurred?
No, sir.
So in your statement, you said, "No criminal charges will be filed and all monies have been accounted for. This case will be handled administratively for violations of policy and procedure." So are we still in an open investigation?
For other accounts, and I'm not sure if I can go into that or not, but the forgery part and the checks that had the signatures that were not Ms. Ross's signature, that money has been accounted for.
And no criminal charges will be filed, you said no criminal charges will be filed?
For the forgery and for the, the signatures of the checks and for the amount of the checks that were made, the monies were accounted for.
This case will be handled administratively for violations of policy and procedure? And you still have an open investigation?
We have an open investigation to other accounts that were found to not have monies accounted for.
So this is premature?
It's an open investigation.
And all monies have been accounted for was at that time, true, correct?
For the forgery and for the accounts that were written for those specific checks.
And you went to the district attorney?
Yes, sir.
With the information, and what did they say?
On this case, on this situation, which I said, it's closed for the forgery part and for the monies that were accounted for, for the checks, but the accounts that we don't have proof for, that is still questionable.
Again, I ask you a question. When you went to the DA's office.
I'm questioning, sir.
On the forgery case, it is, it is cleared because the accounts, the checks that were written out, were accounted for. What's pending are accounts that we're still working on and trying to find.
Ma'am, I appreciate that, but it's not responsive.
Judge Conlon, Judge Conlon. He has asked that question three times.
And she hasn't answered.
Sir, she's answered it three times, move on.
Why was no prosecution undertaken, to your knowledge?
Objection, that calls for her to speculate on what the rationale was by the DA for not pressing any charges.
Sustained, move on.
Who did you see at the DA's office?
I spoke to two gentlemen, one is Skip Hayjack and the other one was Ralph Garcia.
I'm interested, I was chief of misdemeanor at the DA's office.
Sure.
And I, it, I know that the intake process works, and I was just interested in who you, who you talked to, and did they take the case?
No, it's, it wasn't a prosecution guide that was set. This was for assistance to see if we had a case or not, a valid case, because documents are missing, receipts aren't accountable for, there's missing funds, et cetera. Some of the stuff we cannot prove, so therefore, what we have as far as this case on the forgery and the school district checks, everything's been accounted for, and that's why I stated that this case is closing, will be handled administratively.
And when a case is handled administratively, what, what does that suggest as the manner in which it is dealt with? Let me take it back. When you said administratively, do they, do they get future, more instruction to do things right? Or do you examine to see if there, if it's a blatant disregard of rules?
I let administration handle their responsibilities and their duties, and if I'm needed for assistance, I therefore provide assistance to the superintendent and the HR director.
Did you ever establish where Ms. Lauren, didn't, I'm sorry, did Lauren Hopkins ever indicate to you that she had any kind of written document authorizing her to sign?
No, sir.
Were you aware that she gave a later statement to Ms. Barra and Ms., no, to Ms. Dean? Dean and to Ms. Hernandez?
The only statement I know about is the one that's been admitted into evidence as in exhibit.
Ms. Russo?
Chief Ramon, do you know what the standard, or the required proof for a criminal conviction is?
Yes, sir.
And what is that?
Um, what we need to do is make sure we have our ducks in a row, a report, statements, evidence of receipts, checks and balances records from the bank. Uh, once we submit all our evidence, we provide a prosecution guide with a charge and disposition to the district attorney's office for a Class B or above, and it takes anywhere from a week to maybe six months for the, to case, for the case to be heard.
And the district attorney is looking for evidence to be able to establish it beyond a reasonable doubt?
Yes, sir.
Now, wait a minute, I, I'm gonna object, they're asking me, now, now, he's saying what the district attorney is looking for. That is not, first of all, she doesn't know, and now, now, all of a sudden, he's, she's putting him, putting her in the mind of the DA's office.
Okay, sustained, move on, Mr. Russo, go on.
Is it, is it, in your experience, is it a fairly, often circumstance where a witness will initially lie, and then realize that they may be in more trouble than they thought?
Yes, sir.
When they thought they were gonna have protection from someone who was above them?
Yes, sir.
And they realize they don't have that protection?
Yes, sir.
And then they decide to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
The form of the question.
Judge Connelly, Judge Connelly, I've gave you great leeway, I'm giving Mr. Russo great leeway here, okay? Let's move on.
Well, I'm objecting, if something's procedurally incorrect?
Okay.
We can certainly do that, he knows that that's a, that's a leading question to narrow to his own witness.
I have given you plenty of time, sir, you've asked questions over and over again, and I told you, only ask them once, I'm giving great leeway here, so, Mr. Russo, do you have anything else, sir?
No, sir, I do not, not from this witness.
Judge Connelly, do you have anything else, sir, for this witness?
Thank you.
Got it? Board, any questions for the judge? Uh, chief, you're dismissed, thank you. Mr. Russo?
I'm gonna call my last witness.
Yes, sir, go ahead. I'm sorry, I do have one more witness after, after Ms. Hernandez.
She has been sworn in.
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
Would you please state your name for the record?
Irma Hernandez.
And what's your position?
Chief Human Resources Officer.
And what are your duties and responsibilities as chief HR officer?
To ensure an effective, efficient, and compliant human resources system for the district and the day-to-day operations of the Human Resources Department and Personnel.
Do you also conduct investigations when allegations are made involving the conduct of employees?
Yes, sir.
Approximately, how many investigations have you conducted or participated in during the last school year?
They're in the double digits.
In your investigations, do you give the persons you interview an opportunity to submit a written statement?
Yes, sir.
Prior to the board's action on May 19th to propose non-renewal of Ms. Ross, were you ever requested to participate in an investigation of Ms. Ross?
Yes, sir.
What were you asked to investigate?
I was asked to investigate the possible misappropriation and/or management of campus funds, and also possible forgery of some district checks.
Who did you interview during the course of your investigation?
Uh, throughout the course of the investigation, we interviewed approximately 25 employees, either directly, or I participated in those interviews, some of those interviews consisted of campus administrators, to include Ms. Gomez, Ms. Waddis, Ms. Grady, Mr. Ellis, Mr. James, teachers included Coach Coleman, Mr. Clark, Mr. Mueller, Ms. Duke Thomas, Ms. Matthew Thomas, Ms. Coggins, I don't know if I said her before, Ms. Coggins, Ms. Croft, paraprofessionals included, Ms. Hopkins, Ms. Dixon, Ms. Saffold, Ms. Lee, Officer Day, I participated in administrative interviews with Ms. Ross, Mr. Elizondo, Ms. Barra, Chief Ramon, Ms. Nicole Dean, and Ms. Teresa Bear.
Why were so many people interviewed?
The reason for so many people being interviewed is in the course of an investigation, as you're interviewing individuals, you learn of additional information and/or individuals that may have knowledge of what concerns are being investigated throughout the investigation, and therefore, it expands.
Based upon your investigation, did you recommend to the superintendent that Ms. Ross be proposed for non-renewal?
Yes, sir, I did.
Why did you make that recommendation?
Uh, through the course of the investigation, we found that her conduct was non-compliant with procedures and practices, policies either directly or indirectly, and were not enforced at the campus level as a campus administrator.
What was your reaction when you found out that Metzger students were being charged to attend pep rallies?
I, I was shocked, rendered speechless actually for a few seconds.
Have you ever received any information from any source telling you that any other campus was doing that?
No, sir.
What was your reaction when you found out that Metzger students were being charged for composition books that had been purchased by the district for students?
It was similar reaction, I was surprised.
Have you ever received any information from any source that told you that other campuses were doing that?
No, sir.
Following the board's decision to propose non-renewal of Ms. Ross's contract, did you ever get, ever inform Ms. Hopkins that she would be required to give testimony at this hearing?
Yes, sir, I did.
Did you send her an email directing her to appear?
Yes, sir, I did.
What was her response?
She responded that she had already provided testimony in February 23rd, 24th, and also on March 23rd, and that she was not willing to provide any additional testimony.
If you would, we're gonna show us what's been marked, exhibit number 37. Could you please identify that for us?
Yes, it is a transcript of the interview that Ms. Nicole Dean and I conducted with Lauren Hopkins on March 23rd.
Is it a regular part of your practice in conducting investigations to record some of the interviews?
Yes, sir.
Do you rely upon the contents of such interviews in reaching conclusions about an investigation?
Yes, sir.
Did you listen to the audio, the audio recording of the March 23rd, 2016 interview of Ms. Hopkins?
Yes, sir.
Is exhibit 37 an accurate transcription of that interview?
Yes, sir.
At this time, I would offer exhibit 37.
And we entered objection, it was being hearsay, unreliable, arbitrary.
You go ahead and hand those out, please. I have no further questions, is this witness?
Ms. Hernandez, in your investigation, you gave us a long list of people, did you, did you interview Ms. Coggins?
Yes, sir.
And did Ms. Coggins support the statements made by Ms. Hopkins?
What statements are those, sir?
That, that Ms., that Ms. Coggins trained her to forge signatures by holding them up against a window and tracing them?
She said she did not do that.
And my question was, did she support what Ms. Laura Hopkins said?
No, sir.
Did Laura Hopkins's first statement that she made to the police support what she said on, on March 23rd?
No, sir.
And did you read Ms. Coggins's statement to Ms. Hopkins?
Would you repeat the question again, sir?
I, I said, did you read Ms. Coggins's statement to Ms. Hopkins on March 23rd, when you had her in front of you, along with Ms. Nicole Dean?
No, sir.
Did you explain to her that Ms. Coggins had denied what she accused her of?
No, sir.
You, you saying, what, you didn't, this, this, you're saying Laura Hopkins didn't know that Ms. Coggins disputed what she had said?
My interview with Ms. Coggins was after my March 23rd interview with Ms. Hopkins.
Pardon me?
My interview of Ms. Coggins was after my interview with Ms. Hopkins.
Okay, let's see that. Just a minute, I'll get the copy of the exhibit. Do you have a copy of exhibit there?
If you'll let me know what number I'm looking for.
Page forty, page 47.
Of the numbered exhibits?
No, exhibit number 37.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Transcript.
Page?
Forty-seven. And I call your attention to line one. Would you read that for us?
Okay, Jamie Coggins, who was in your position prior to you being the secretary, who is now a teacher there at Metzger, correct?
Ms. Hopkins said that's correct, and then you said? Did you mean your part?
Yes, sir. She provided a written statement to us as we're doing this ongoing investigation, and in that statement, she stated that when she trained you for the secretary position, that she never recommended that you should forge Ms. Ross's signature on a student activity checks, so tell us everything you recall about Ms. Coggins trained you.
And Ms. Hopkins said, "Uh-huh."
Correct.
And what she, and go ahead.
And what she told you as far as whether you had the authority to sign checks or not access accounts on Ms. Ross's behalf?
So, you had taken Ms. Coggins's statement before this occurred, had?
I did, I did not, I spoke with Ms. Coggins later, Ms. Coggins was interviewed prior to my interview with her by Ms.-
That this is not true?
No, I didn't say that.
Said she provided a written statement to us as we're doing this ongoing investigation? Those are your words?
Yes, sir.
And that statement, she stated that when she trained you for the secretary position, that she never recommended that you should forge Ms. Ross's signature on a student activity checks, so tell us everything you recall about how Ms. Coggins trained you.
And it's possible, I interviewed her two times, I believe I interviewed her two times.
But you had a written statement at the time you took this?
I can't recall at this moment without looking at it, because I did interview her two times.
Ms. Hernandez, I'm not trying to put games with you, I'm telling you, is this true, that she provided a written statement to us as we're doing this ongoing investigation?
Yes.
And you knew that information when you were talking to, to Laura Hopkins?
Yes.
And as a result of taking a written statement from Ms. Coggins disputing that, did you or did you not continue to accept Ms. Hopkins's version as the foundation for your establishing that Ms. Ross wasn't telling you the truth?
No, sir.
What else, what information did Ms. Hopkins give you to help you formulate your decision that Ms. Ross had not told you the truth about her having permission to sign checks, about Ms. Ross having permission to sign checks?
Ms. Hopkins indicated that she had Ms. Ross's permission to sign checks.
Okay, I just ask you, what other information did you have besides Ms. Hopkins telling you that?
I didn't have any other information, other than her statement to me.
So, Ms. Hopkins's statement is the basis upon which you made all these statements regarding the fact that the checks, they had permission to go forward, is that correct?
Would you repeat that, please, sir?
At the interview, I'm just reading now what's charged, at the interview, Ms. Ross misrepresented the fact that when she stated she never required or permitted Lauren Hopkins to approve purchase requests or other types of requests that Ms. Ross was required to approve as principal. And the basis of that is on the fact that Ms. Hopkins said that?
Not just on the fact that Ms. Hopkins said that, it was throughout the course of the investigation and the numerous employees that we interviewed.
What, who did you interview that get, made it a fact that Lauren Hopkins was required and permitted to approve purchase requests or other types of requests that Ms. Ross was required to approve as principal?
Ms. Deborah Stevens, when we interviewed her, it stated that she was given access to Ms. Ross's passwords, and she was in fact going in there and approving forms on behalf of Ms. Ross.
Was that before or after she had had our conversation with her, and, and Ms. Ross appointed an assistant principal to do that job?
It was when I met with Ms. Hopkins, that she told us that she had access to her passwords. Uh, she gave that information on February the 24th in a written statement, gave us what the password was. Technology department verified that the password that she had for Ms. Ross was in fact the current password that Ms. Ross had.
And the manner in which she acquired that password, you relying upon her statement that she got it from Ms. Ross with Ms. Ross's permission?
That's the only way she could get a password, and if the individual releases their password.
If she is assisting Ms. Ross with the problem she's having with accessing a plan, could she become exposed to it, if she's standing over her to see what the, what the password is?
Not knowing what Ms. Hopkins was overseeing over Ms. Ross's shoulder, typically when we're working on a program, you've already logged into the computer, you've already opened up the system, so for example, if I were to be going into e-finance, I would log in my user number and my password, and the screen would be up.
And if you tried to log in and the screen didn't come up, and you called somebody for help, you would have to start all over again by putting your login and bringing it up, is that correct?
If my user ID and my log, my user login and my password did not work, I'd call the help desk for some assistance, because it's a logging in issue, it's not something that my secretary or a member of my staff can assist me with, because it's a logging in issue, so either my password has been changed, or I don't remember my password, and so I need to contact the help desk, so that I can either be issued a new one, or they can assist me with what the problem is, logging in.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think it's not responsive, but if she assists her to getting in and trying to, "Hey, this is not working," and she said, "Well, let me try," would that be an opportunity for her to figure out what the password was?
She's asked and answered that question already.
It's not been answered. You start describing what, what scenario that I didn't even bring up, but that's fine, let's go on to something else.
Sure.
How many passwords are there?
It depends on, on the individual and on the system, for example, ASOP requires a password, and I'm just speaking to the systems that I use, e-finance, Ediforia, Intranet, logging into my computer, VPN access, remote access, all use the same password, we are required, or the system requires us to- We are required, or the system requires us to change our passwords so many months. I think it's approximately four to six months. But depending on the various systems that you have access to, there is a different password. Boardbook, for example, has a different password. Boardbook, for example, has a different password for us administrators. So they're not all the same.
But would that be something that Ms. Ross would have access to? Would you just talk about board?
No. No.
So she would have one password, most likely?
I can't speak to that, sir, because I don't know what passwords. For the system, Eduforia, for Intranet, to log into one's computer at work, it is the same login and the same password. E-finance, the same thing.
And in that interview, Ms. Hopkins said she had run personal errands? Did you have any independent information regarding that?
No, other than what she shared with me in the interview.
Not what she shared, which is what she told you, is what you're trying to say, right?
Yes, sir.
And at the interview, Ms. Ross represented the facts when she stated she followed the process required of her for purchasing items for the school. Did you have any independent information that was not a product of following up or something Ms. Hopkins said? Did you have any independent information?
Information that was provided throughout the investigation by all employees that were interviewed to include the documentation that was provided by the business office.
Did you go to any other people where items were purchased from to verify whether or not the purchase had been made?
No, sir, I did not.
And you're not saying that she didn't purchase items that they're supposed to, it's just she didn't follow the process. Is that correct?
Exactly.
Okay, this is... At the interview, Ms. Ross misrepresented the facts when she stated all the work done on the private film concerning Neville Shedd being made by a protection company in which she was a partner was done after hours. Am I mistaken, or did Ms. Hopkins indicate that she went to school right after... Right as soon as her work day was over, she left and went to school?
She's going to school, or was at the time. I don't know. She is now going to school after...
Did she ever represent to you that she didn't hang around the school because she had to go immediately after work to go to school?
She indicated that she had school after... She was going to school, college, after work.
And you knew there was a film... Did she tell you that there was a film crew at the school?
I heard that from Ms. Gomez in the interview.
Okay. And that... Did you ever find out that she said that the film crew was there during a presentation that Ms. Ross was working on for her, for a presentation about the school and what they're doing there?
About accomplishments that had been made at the school, yes.
Now, this is interesting. We said, Ms. Ross misrepresented the fact when she minimized her role in charging students to attend pep rallies. Did anybody tell you that she stood out there collecting money for pep rallies?
I was told by campus employees and administrators that they were directed to sell tickets throughout the week, sometimes two or three days prior to an event. And they would do them during the sixth, seventh, and eighth lunch period. And that only students that had purchased a ticket were allowed to go to the event. All other students that did not purchase a ticket were to go to class.
And they reversed the order so that the free period would be the period that the students would be able to attend the pep rallies?
My understanding from the information that was shared throughout the investigation was that students were in class, and so those that did not purchase a ticket reported to class.
And you said minimize her role. What do you mean? She didn't turn it over to the sponsors?
Minimize her role by not enforcing policies and procedures and for allowing the sale of tickets for district events that were provided to the students during the school day, the selling of composition books. She did state in her interview that she was aware that Ms. Dixon was charging fifty cents. But there was no evidence that she took any direct action to discontinue the practice.
Did you ever follow up with Ms. Dixon?
Yes, sir.
And what does Ms. Dixon say?
Ms. Dixon stated that the directive to sell composition books came from Ms. Ross.
And what... Did she talk to her about being responsible? Did Ms. Dixon talk about making the students responsible?
She did not say that in her statement when I met with her.
And did you ever make that statement available to Ms. Ross?
No, sir.
All right. Misrepresented when she stated she minimized her role in charging students to refer to soft showings. Does the money for those projects go back... Did the money for those projects go back to the project?
I'm not aware of where those funds went to that were collected at these events.
Did you find out that they... That somebody from the outside came in and collected money?
No, sir.
Ms. Ross misrepresented facts when she minimized her role in charging students with temporary IDs. And the basis of that was on Ms. Dixon?
Yes, sir.
And when you were visiting her... When you were visiting her, Ms. Dixon, were you telling her? Did she understand why you were there?
Yes, sir.
And then you give her... You gave her the statement that Ms. Ross made, and then you asked her a question? Or you asked her a question, and then you gave her the statement Ms. Ross made?
I asked her if it was her decision to charge fifty cents for the composition books because in a statement that Ms. Ross had provided earlier, Ms. Ross had indicated that she was the one that was wanting to charge the students and that she wanted to do it because she wanted to hold them responsible for not having the supplies with them. And she... At that point, she responded by saying, no, she didn't agree with charging students for the composition books and stated that the directive came from Ms. Ross.
And where is this coming from? Let someone who was not an employee of the district get a key to the district facility. Who informed you of that?
The gentleman's name is... I cannot think of his name right now, but he is the trainer for the Gladiator camp. I believe that's what it's called, or the... It's an exercise group that has exercise meetings with employees and we make it available to our employees and community members at various campuses. And I'm sorry, but his name escapes me right now. He stated to us that he was given a key to the campus by Ms. Ross. By Ms. Hopkins. I apologize. Ms. Hopkins.
And Ms. Barr brought him to the campus. Isn't that correct?
I don't know. I don't know, sir.
All right. So Ms. Barr... Let's assume Ms. Barr brought him to the campus, and Lauren gave him a key for what purpose?
Sir, I don't know that Ms. Barr brought him to the campus, so I'm not going to assume that. But the statement that we received from him indicated that he spoke to Ms. Ross, and Ms. Ross told him to go to Ms. Hopkins to get a key for the campus.
Did Ms. Juarez have anything to do with Camp Gladiator?
Camp Gladiator, that's what it's called. I don't know, sir.
And what was the purpose for him? Did you ever figure out... When you talked to him, did he tell you what they did in the building, what they had a key for?
Yes, he stated that... Because they're at the campus throughout the year, and in the winter months, sometimes it was cold. And they do the exercises with the employees or community members outside, outdoors. And so at that point in time is when he had a conversation with Ms. Ross per his statement. And he was told, you know, he could have the exercising or Camp Gladiator inside the building when it was cold. And was then told to go to Ms. Hopkins to get a key.
There wasn't any profit in it for Ms. Ross?
I can't answer that, sir. I don't know.
She doesn't get any money from Camp... Did he indicate that he's paying any money for Camp Gladiator to be at her school?
No, sir.
Does anybody pay any money to Camp Gladiator?
I don't know that, sir. I don't have the answer to that.
Don't they have access to another school?
I do not know that, sir.
Did you check with Ms. Barrett regarding Jeca?
No, sir, I did not.
Regarding what?
Jeca, J-E-C-A, capitalized. Is that Judson? Early College Academy. Did you discuss Judson Early College Academy at all with the man from Gladiators?
No, sir, I did not.
Then it says, Ms. Ross required, permitted, authorized, or condoned the practice of Ms. Hopkins signing Ms. Ross's name on school checks. Again, is that any different than the beginning? Interview conducted on April... That would really mean May 9th, attended by District Chief of Resources Irma Hernandez and Associate Superintendent Elida Barr. Ms. Ross misrepresented the fact that she did not know prior to February 23rd that someone else had signed her name to school checks.
Excuse me. I would point out there are differences, and that's why there are two different parts of that statement. That there's misrepresentation of the information, and then there's the actual fact that Ms. Ross authorized Ms. Hopkins to sign her name to checks. Those are two different things. Not telling the truth about it and actually telling Ms. Hopkins that she could sign her name to checks.
There's testimony about somebody telling the truth.
Hold on. Hold on here. Let's move on here. We are now almost hour and a half into this second session, okay? Again, I agree, great leeway here. We're almost four hours into this, and we haven't got to you, Judge Conley. And you're entitled to cross-examine, but at the beginning of this hearing, everyone's going to get two hours. I agree, great leeway. So we need to move this on, okay? And move it on quickly. It's 3:30, and I have been more than lenient with cross-examination, examination. So let's move on, sir.
And again, as...
Sir, I can set times right now. I have the total authority of the presiding officer to set times right now. So you're right? Okay, we in agreement with that? So let's please move on.
I certainly agree with it. And I have every duty to make sure that I do everything I can to make sure that this lady gets justice.
And, sir...
So I'm not on your schedule unless you say I'm on your schedule. If you say I'm on your schedule, we will operate within it.
Okay, sir. You have five minutes on this witness, and we're done.
Okay. So the information that you had regarding required, permitted, authorized, or condoned was based upon Laura Hopkins' testimony? Laura Hopkins' testimony, after you received testimony from Ms. Coggins that it was not true what she had represented, Ms. Coggins has told her, had showed her what to do. Is that correct?
Would you repeat that? It sounded like there were two questions.
You gave Ms. Coggins... You stated that you had a written statement from Ms. Coggins saying that Laura Hopkins was wrong, that Laura Hopkins had never been trained to forge checks, that Laura Hopkins had never given permission to sign anybody else's name, that Laura Hopkins had never learned from her how to do that. And I'm saying to you that despite the fact that you talked to Ms. Coggins, did you believe Ms. Coggins was being truthful?
I cannot say she was being truthful or she was misrepresented. I just accepted her statement for what it was. And what she stated in her statement was that she did not trace Ms. Ross's signature against a window and that she did not train Ms. Hopkins to trace Ms. Ross's name against the shadow of a window.
So this... Did you have any reason to believe Ms. Coggins was less than honorable person? Less than a truthful person?
No, sir, I don't.
And you have been through it with Ms. Ross, who's admitted that she's committed forgery. She lied to the first person that she talked to about this matter. And then when she left, she sent you an email saying she wouldn't want to testify and then signed on her... To sign out she... That she was leaving because she wants to pursue higher education, when in fact, she resigned because she'd been fired. Is that...
I'm going to object. There's nothing in the record to indicate that. She has a resignation. That document speaks for itself. There has been no action taken by the district to terminate Ms. Hopkins.
Was Ms. Hopkins receiving a paycheck since February 24?
No, sir.
Was she appearing at this campus any day? Did she ever come back to the campus without being invited by you?
No, sir.
So maybe she was fired?
No, sir.
She wasn't fired?
No, sir.
So usually when you work, you get paid, or you have a duties and assignments. She had no duties and no assignments. She was placed on administrative leave?
She was placed on administrative leave without pay.
Without pay?
Yes, sir.
All right. But that isn't being fired?
No, sir, it's not.
Okay. And you gave her an opportunity to resign?
No, sir. We never discussed resignation.
You didn't?
No, sir.
That's your five minutes, Judge. Mr. Russo, anything else?
Yes, I just have a couple of questions, Mr. Slaughter. In your experience, Ms. Hernandez, is it unusual for information provided by witnesses to be in conflict?
No, it's not.
If Ms. Ross had properly carried out her duties in connection with fundraising activities, would you have had a problem in finding out, figuring out where the money had been spent from those fundraising activities?
No, sir.
So she didn't carry out her duties and obligations as she needed to, did she?
That is correct, sir.
Nothing further. Is that it?
Do you know about how much money was raised?
No, sir.
Do you know who got the money?
No, sir.
Did you ever see a petty cash fund?
No, sir.
Pass the witness.
That's it. I have nothing further.
Okay. You're dismissed, Ms. Hernandez. Let's take a 10-minute break. Be back at 10:00.
My next witness will be the last witness.